Highway redevelopment, which is ongoing. Adams Dairy Landing and Coronado Place, which is ongoing. And the Missouri Innovation Park, again, ongoing. Next major accomplishment is downtown development. The downtown master plan was adopted in 2003. The downtown development code in 2007. The 353 policy introduction from 1998 to the president. It's an incentive program to encourage redevelopment of blighted areas through the abatement of real property taxes. That was revised in 2008, calling for policy expiration in 2013, noting that the policy does not apply to individual, single-family structures. And it created three tax abatement levels with a minimum investment of $50,000. The next major accomplishment is downtown development. CDBG funds have been used for downtown infrastructure improvements from 2006 to the present. $479,251 have been spent for 6,950 feet of sidewalk downtown. $178,000 has been spent for street improvements and special paving elements. $72,000 has been spent on street lights for a total investment of $729,251. Another major accomplishment is, of course, maintaining existing infrastructure through our annual CIP allocation. Our street rehabilitation program has increased its revenue expenditures in 2007 from $1.5 million to $2.5 million a year. And then it's going to be increased to $3.5 million in 2015. $21.5 million in general obligations. Bonds were approved by the voters of Blue Springs in 2008 for improvements to Woodschapel Road to complete Seven Highway and Colburn Road intersection and to complete the extension of Moreland School Road. Maintenance of existing infill housing. We have, through the CDBG program, adopted a minor home repair program in 2008, and a property maintenance code was adopted in 2008. Another major accomplishment has been the adoption of multifamily design standards in 2008. Some of the examples of the new standards for multifamily housing is that open space has increased from 10% to 40%. There is a maximum number of units per floor requirement varies by zoning district to encourage buildings to go up instead of out. Four-sided design, four-sided architecture to break up blank walls with entryways, windows on all elevations, and architectural details. And then pedestrian circulation for accessibility standards to open space, streets, and adjoining Another major accomplishment, regional stormwater runoff detention retention, lake remembrance. I know Commissioner Parker is working on natural detention basins. That's something that's currently being worked on. Preservation of open space. South Blue Springs, the city purchased 100 acres of parkland in 2008. It's the first parks purchased in southern Blue Springs in over 30 years. A 25-acre park north of Wyatt and west of Seven Highway to be used as a neighborhood park. And then a 75-acre park north of Colburn Road, south of Mason School Road, and west of Shroud Road to be used as a mix of neighborhood facilities and sports fields. Priorities derived from the comprehensive plan goal and objectives in Chapter 5 that require further focus because they've not been undertaken or are still ongoing. Promoting downtown development, redevelopment, and revitalize existing commercial centers. Address housing maintenance and redevelopment issues on a continuing basis to prevent deterioration of existing neighborhoods and to encourage the community to reinvest in developed areas. And develop and implement residential and non-residential design, particularly architectural standards, to promote quality development in Blue Springs. These still need to be done. Also, adopt standards for traditional neighborhood design, sometimes known as TND. Maintain existing transportation infrastructure while connecting to new thoroughfare roads that accommodate multiple means of transit. And then in our original comp plan, road network and growth areas, development of impact fees and excise tax. Priority for regional stormwater runoff detention retention. It's a major goal for utilization and preservation of natural resources. Bad detention basins, I know we're all familiar, they're site-specific detention. It does little to direct or collect water runoff. It's not natural. It's not aesthetically pleasing. Here's some examples. The one on the left is on 12th and Knox, and the one on the right is on 40 Highway. That's what we'd like to steer away from. A major goal, utilization and preservation of natural resources. Incorporate natural resources of growth areas such as rolling topography, water bodies, and existing vegetation that give identity to Blue Springs. Reevaluate residential street design standards to allow for incorporation of natural resources. And then we would like to see and adopt a tree preservation ordinance adopted. This is an example of the pines subdivision with trail-sloping topography and incorporation of existing vegetation. We need to have development standards that allow for incorporation of such natural resources that it's cost-effective for developers to develop in such a manner. Recommendations. Create one working document. It was important to blend the area plan with the comp plan so that we all, the planning commission and the developers, have one document to work with. Comprehensive plan amendments, addition of comprehensive plan objectives, and emphasize redevelopment areas for the next comprehensive plan update. Create one working document for ease and efficiency. It'd be helpful for both the planning commission and the developers to have one document, and especially because sometimes the two conflicted with one another. Blend portions of the area plan with the comp plan and add the entire area plan to the comprehensive plan as Appendix J. Recommendations. Comprehensive plan amendments, Chapter 6 and future land use. We add the addition, we are adding the addition of residential estate. This is in the area plan and not the comp plan. The addition of neighborhood commercial, the creation of Missouri Innovation Park, and the addition of areas beyond the current boundaries of the comprehensive plan. The top area is an area that was not included in the comprehensive plan that was in the area plan. We're adding residential estate and some industrial classification areas. Area 2, moving the development node at Slaughter Road and Pink Hill Road to northeast Jealouson Road and Pink Hill Road. This change is reflecting the area plan. This was done because of the future development of Adams Dairy Parkway and Pink Hill Road. And then the bottom area is to create Missouri Innovation Park under future land use classification. It's kind of, it's hard to see if it's a striped area on the bottom. On the next map, the first arrow is a smaller development node southeast of Adams Dairy Parkway and southeast Moreland School Road. This has to do with Parkway Estates development. So it no longer encompasses as much land south of the intersection. This reflects the comprehensive plan. Second arrow is a change of low-density residential land use classification east of the corporate limits to residential estate and extension of that land use classification. That reflects the area plan. This one, the first arrow is long, low-density residential land use classification east of the corporate limits to residential estate. This reflects the area plan. Second arrow is a change in land use classification from low-density residential to parks' open space. This is because of the recently acquired 75-acre city park north of southeast Colburn. This reflects the change in current land use. This one, the first arrow is land use classification from low-density residential to parks' open space. Land use classification for the recently acquired 25-acre city park north of Wyatt and west of Seven. Second arrow extends the boundaries of the planning area further west to include areas shown in the area plan and designate as residential estate. Again, this reflects the area plan. Recommendations. The addition of the area plan objectives to the existing comprehensive plan goals and objectives in Chapter 5. It's the same language. It's simply adding more specific statements for achieving those goals. And here's some examples. We wanted to blend the two documents. Areas of emphasis for the next plan update that were important to the committee were the redevelopment of I-70 and Woodschapel Road and Seven Highway and 40 Highway. Increase visual appeal. Incorporate more landscaping, less paving. Require redevelopment to comply with landscaping regulations. Incorporate more open and/or public spaces. Encourage infill development. Encourage quality mixed-use, high-density, new urbanism development. Introduce gateway features. And not an actual, necessarily a gateway, a physical gateway, but landscaping to make the entryways into the city more pleasing and appealing. And incorporate more quality, large-scale artwork. And the next step. Planning commission review and approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendments. You'll probably look in those at your next meeting, I believe. And then after 2010 census is completed, an update of the entire comprehensive plan in fiscal year 2012, 2013. And thank you very much. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We don't have any action required on this tonight. We will have a public hearing at our next meeting. But I'm sure Councilman Solon would entertain any questions that anyone has.
Quick question. The residential estates, can you explain that classification? What's...
That is the area that, I don't know if I can get that back on the map. There was areas on the whole yellow area that were in the area plan. They're outside the current limits of the comprehensive plan, and the area plan designated those areas as residential estate, low-density housing. We were merely incorporating, we're adding, requesting that the definition be added to the comprehensive plan because it doesn't exist. And incorporate the areas that were not included in the comprehensive plan in the, from the area plan into the comp plan.
What's the classification on that? I mean, what do you...
So you want to grab it? Is it, we can tell, you want to, how many units per acre?
Yep.
I think it's one to three, but...
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it is certainly less dense than the low-density residential that's in the comp plan. So exactly, it's to create another, just another category, no level, of low-density residential in that rural area. I'm, is it less than that? Okay. It's, I think it's just generally less than four units per acre, the low-density residential.
My memory serves me as one to three.
Yeah, something like that.
One of the, if you want to go back here on slide 31. We were talking about redeveloping Seven Highway and 40 Highway. And you're talking about incorporating more landscaping, less paving, which I'm all in favor of more landscaping, don't get me wrong here. But didn't we, to encourage redevelopment, didn't we do just the opposite? Didn't we allow some reduction in some landscaping requirements and things like that so that buildings will actually fit on the site and you don't have to take up the whole site for landscaping? So are we trying to go back on what we had previously decided to do, or? I'm confused.
This was a recommendation for the, when the comprehensive plan comes back up for review in 2012, 2013. That was an area that we wanted the planning commission to look at. When we were having discussions as a committee and we discussed those two areas we felt were very important. The one overwhelming thing that we kept saying was, it's too much pavement. It's too much asphalt. That somehow we need to make that more appealing. And the way that can be achieved is something the planning commission can determine when they review the comprehensive plan. But we have always discussed as a planning commission, some kind of incentive program, whether it's the matching of funds or some way to get, to get commercial properties to put more landscaping on their properties.
Sometimes, though, by requiring more landscaping on some of these lots, we make it unfeasible to put a building there. I mean, so we're never going to get it redeveloped if we raise those landscaping standards. That's what I'm concerned with.
And I understand your concerns. It was just in our discussions, that was something we definitely wanted to highlight because that was kind of an overwhelming feeling we had at those two intersections, was the feeling of asphalt. And we really, it wasn't our task to really recommend how we were going to accomplish those goals. It was just for us to dream the dream for the next comprehensive plan review and things that we would like to see incorporated.
I just don't want us to dream ourselves out of any possible development.
Thank you.
I think that a lot of what you're addressing are items that were on a case-by-case basis. I don't recall ever changing the standards to be less than. I think it was a case-by-case, which of course would be the same instance here.
I thought we actually, there was actually a redevelopment ordinance that allowed for reduction in landscaping.
With certain conditions.
With conditions, yes.
Right. But that's why I say it was a case-by-case, you know, if you met certain conditions...
There is an actual ordinance out there. It's not just a, we're doing it on a case-by-case basis.
No, but you made exception on a case-by-case basis. So this would be the same sort of situation.
Are there other questions?
Commissioner Sullivan, just, I did find that for Commissioner Parker. The residential state or rural residential, its development density is less than one unit per acre.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, the concept there is to simply preserve that rural residential that's outside the proposed urban growth area, is what it states here from the area plan.
And where are those areas located at?
Skip back a little bit.
Where's multiple acre lots?
Yeah, there you go. You can see there the southwest portion, that arrow, the lower arrow. Those existing residential areas out there, those are three, many of those are three-acre residential areas.
The top arrow.
We could defer to Commissioner Trozen. A lot of those, again, like rural residential in the county.
I have a couple of questions. On the minor home repair program, can you tell me what's happening with that?
Well, the first year the city council adopted the plan, and we had kind of a pilot program where it was $75,000 out of general fund, just to see if it was a success. It was a great success, and that's been transitioned now through CDBG funds instead of the general fund. And actually, the allocation was increased from $75,000 to $125,000 because it was such a success. And the big reason why we really wanted to adopt a minor home repair program similar to only some in other cities was with the adoption of the property maintenance code, we didn't want to put too hard a burden on people who couldn't improve their property, and they had another way to go to get their property improved. You know, we were especially concerned about senior citizens that maybe couldn't afford to fix their properties up. And so far, the program's been a big success.
What's the maximum that any one person can apply for?
It's $5,000 per property.
Five thousand, alright. Then I have another question, and maybe this is for Ross. The parks, expansion of the parks. I've heard that in other cities, parks have become kind of a problem in that teenage gangs hang out in these parks and whatever, particularly in the neighborhood parks. And is that, are we experiencing any of that here?
That's probably a case-by-case basis. Yes, we've had vandalism, some minor gang activity in some parks. It's a cyclical issue generally for us where it's a certain age bracket for a couple of years. They either grow out of it, or they then become mobile and leave the neighborhood and go elsewhere. And it disappears for a while until another generation or two years later, some other kids get into it. Hasn't been that severe here. We have our share of vandalism, yes. We haven't had any major gang activity. I think you can also contact the Public Safety Department and find out in their records what kind of incidences we do have. They're not severe. They're not highly dangerous, not a shootings, you know, things of that nature.
Do they require more patrolling than most areas?
Patrolling, lighting, neighborhood active groups that keep an eye on things. That's one thing we've tried to do with some of the parks that we have had issues, is get the neighborhood more involved, watch from their homes, get video, get license plates, things of that nature, more bike patrols. Parks that are heavily used have less problems. So you can look at it as, you know, a large park like Hidden Valley with as many ball fields and games as we have going on, we generally have less problems than a small neighborhood park. And it's mainly because there's a lot of people around, a lot of visibility, nothing goes on while people are in the park. But even at that site, at Hidden Valley as an example, as soon as the people leave, we still have issues. There's vandalism, there's break-ins to the buildings if nobody's around. So we haven't built a lot of neighborhood parks in recent years. We haven't bought a lot of land in recent years. So our neighborhood parks, there's probably five or six I would consider as truly neighborhood parks. And yes, we have some issues, but they're not major.
Okay, good. Thank you.
As a member of the task force, I'd like to thank Councilman Solon for her leadership and guidance. Without that, this could have been a very laborious type of activity going through this process. But we kept very focused as far as, but very cautious on the items to take a look at and at trying to blend the area plan to the comp plan. As a newbie to the planning commission, on a second item, I'd like to congratulate the planning commission for the number of accomplishments that have occurred since the comprehensive plan of 2003. You all deserve a job well done and a pat on the back. It was amazing for me to go through and see the accomplishments that have been made by the planning commission.
It is good sometimes to sit back and see what has been accomplished.
That was probably the one kind of, the nice thing about being on this committee was reviewing all the accomplishments. And we looked at the goals and objectives to see how much, I know we have so much to do, but to look at how much has been accomplished since 2003, really, we have moved forward in a lot of really great ways, so.
And we also saw a lot of things happen that were on the comprehensive plan and we followed that plan, which really brought to light what a good plan it is and how important it is to have that working document.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other question?
Yes.
To what degree was the public sought after for input? And if so, then how much did you get on this?
There was absolutely no public input on this. No, this was a committee that reviewed it, and that was why, we were walking a very fine line because when you review, update an entire comprehensive plan, you have charrettes, you have public hearings. That was not our task. Our task was to review it. So we were very cognizant of that, and that's why you're not going to see widespread changes. It was just basically to take the comprehensive plan and the area plan, look at the areas where there were inconsistencies, and blend the two documents, which is actually going to make, you know, your job as a planning commissioner much easier because you're not going to have to be trying to balance the two documents.
Okay, anything else? Thank you very much. We look forward to the next meeting. Okay. Jim, were you going to introduce the next item?
Yes, thank you.
Adams Dairy Landing Public Art Presentation.
Yes, thank you. Really just a few items to bring up, and that is, of course, that the comp plan was approved, or that, I'm sorry, the concept plan was approved in September of '07, followed by the approval of the PUD final plans. And with each of those approvals, the planning commission addressed the art, spoke of the art. With the initial approval, they approved, you approved 10% reduction for public art and then 10% for the fountains and plazas, and that was the maximum 20% that was allowed. You also had requested that RED Development take their proposal to the Public Art Commission, which they did on August 19th. The Public Art Commission listened to that and then came back in a separate meeting on the 26th, or, yeah, excuse me, on the 26th. They discussed the proposal, provided staff with comments. We summarized those comments in a memorandum that's included with your packet dated September the 3rd. RED has also reviewed those comments, and they responded to them, and I think in the, next to the last paragraph in the memorandum discussing this, it talks a little bit about a few of the things that RED had some questions about or concerns about. But without further ado, I'd like to turn this over to RED, fulfilling condition number 18 of the PUD final plan approval for Area 1. They will provide their presentation.
Thank you, Jim. Ken Boone, I'm the Director of Design for Ochsner-Harren here in Kansas City. And we're happy to be back and to show you the sort of concrete things that we've been planning all along and now that they're becoming real, to really flesh that stuff out for you. I think one of the things you'll see today is the things we've been talking about all along are here. They've always been here, and we're reinforcing that today. So let's get into it. Jim did a good job of summarizing approvals and where things are at. I want to go to number three, which is that really what we're here to talk about today, which is the 20% open space reduction, is approved with 10% for public art and 10% for fountains and plazas. And we need to be back here before the issuance of occupancy permits. And in doing that, Jim also mentioned that we had numerous meetings with staff, discussed how we can meet this criteria and what your expectations would be to meet this criteria. And we presented to staff with our plan and our design on the plazas and the art. They gave us recommendations for that, and then they helped us along the process with getting to the Art Commission and presenting to them. And they gave us terrific feedback. We had a wonderful meeting. They gave us feedback and a recommendation endorsement of the plan, which in the letter that's attached in your packet. You know, the critical thing for us tonight is that we have met the submission of this document and opened for discussion. But certainly, the submission of the document is critical for the target C of O, so that they can open and do business, which I think everybody wants to have happen. We have now, through the submission, met that requirement, and we're very pleased with that as well. So let's get into the detail. Just to give you sort of an updated overall site plan, again, it's easy to see I-70 at the top of the map, Adams Dairy, that sort of cuts through the left side of the map, and then the three project areas of the project. It's also important to note that Area 2 and Area 3 are much more frontage road sort of uses. They tend to be pad-driven, individual pad-driven stuff, very similar to the development that is to the, that is to the east, or, excuse me, to the west of us. Whereas the large Area 1 area really gives us the area and the depth to focus on the things I think you guys have really focused us on. But I do want to mention that Area 2 and Area 3 does have the landscape standards, the increased landscape that has been indicated in Jim's memo. So let's talk a little bit about the plazas, gathering spaces for public use. We thought all along, we knew all along, that the pedestrians are going to go through our central spine of the project between, off Coronado at our main entry in our lifestyle area, which has the main street shops, portion of the projects that we talked about all along, and around the roundabout, and to this pedestrian connector piece that we've shown before, that has the landscape and the amenity pieces in it. And then along this wide storefront along the fronts. And then also back to the connection to Artemis here. And that really became our, if we have a choice, and we do, where do we spend the finishes and the, where do we put benches, and where do we put all the amenity pieces that we're going to put in here? Doesn't make any sense, obviously, to put them out here because the people won't experience them out there. But where they will experience them is through this central piece here and this cross axis through here. And so what we've done is we've focused our efforts on providing the enhancements that are talked about in those areas, and we think it's turned out really nice. One of the things I mentioned, I think last time I was here, was that we had great connections to the rest of the pedestrian system outside and inside the project. And so what I wanted to do is bring this back and show you the amount of connections that we are getting back to to get pedestrians, bikes, et cetera, into the project. The blue lines are all of our internal circulation that focus on pedestrian traffic that's sidewalk or crosswalk protected. You can see it's the entire fronts of the stores, it's both sides of this, the main spine here, the roadway here. So it really collects all the users on the internal and gets them to the fun spaces in the middle, okay? Those also connect out to the public system that we're adding along Artemis and along Coronado. And those get us back to the main system, which is along both sides and at the crosswalks at Adams Dairy Parkway. So we think we've made a lot of effort and a lot of good effort. So we think we've made a lot of effort, a lot of good effort, in getting pedestrians access to the site and around the site and through it, so that it really can become a walking environment, even though you have, you know, these larger format stores with their parking in front of them, like they need to operate. So we think this system has really, has really been good on the project, and we think it enhances the project as well. Okay. So as we look at where we focus those things, at the entry here, we have a landscape median that goes along the entire Main Street that's similar to this one right here. As you approach the project and you move through, so you can divide the traffic, you can keep traffic going still, but you still have the paving material in there, you still have lights in there, you still have landscaping in there. So again, it enhances that entry sense, and it also enhances the entire development, we think. We've included a lot of plaza area in these small shop areas, and you can see here that this is what it would typically look like along the fronts of those, where you've got a nice wide area in the front. We do pots and annual color and those sorts of things up adjacent to the building. We've got side amenities like receptacles, benches. You can see the lighting here as well. We get landscape in, but we also provide ample space for cars to pull in, overhang, you know, all those kind of things. And then you see the addition of quality enhancement of materials that happen there. That is all happening along here. You can see the enhancement of materials there. You can see the walks there and the street tree rhythm that goes along there. And then we also have landscape that goes along this edge as well. So we have this sort of condition that's very reflective of what's going on here. We also have these two areas here, and I've got a later slide that I'll show you, that the gaps in the buildings provide us a real nice opportunity to provide a courtyard that's more than just a pass-through. It's an opportunity that talks about quality, and it's a place for somebody to go. If they come and get ice cream, they can go sit down with the kids and have it, and have it in this area. Again, we've talked about the theme of, you know, providing the ability for people to stay longer in the store, in the development, which means typically they bring the cash registers longer. That's important, obviously. But in order to help them do that, we have to provide for them spaces in which they feel comfortable, and it's great, and it's a nice space to stay. I think we do that just fantastically. So we'll show you what we're planning on those areas right there. We get to the roundabout. The roundabout will be annual color in here, and we've also got a holiday tree that goes in the middle here for the holidays, and otherwise, we plant vegetation in the middle of that, so that this experience is nice in here, and it becomes sort of a, sort of a weathermark right here, especially in the holidays, which is, you know, four months of the year for, at times, three months of the year. And it allows people to know that they can go around there, and it becomes a feature again. We get down to this pedestrian connector that we talked about before. Again, excuse me, similar to these photographs here, which is a nice, wide sidewalk here, enough for three or four people to walk comfortably abreast through there. They are enhanced on either end with overhead structures, masonry, et cetera. To really create this becomes much, and planted along these edges, it really becomes much more of a garden walk than it becomes anything else. And we think these are really effective, and it's very sheltered and very comfortable for pedestrians to move through, especially people with strollers and kids and everything else, because you have, you also have traffic movement on either side. So it's nice, it's wide. You know, we referenced this St. Joe project quite a bit. This is wider, I think maybe 15 feet wider than the one in St. Joe, which provides us with more paving room and also provides us more landscape room in there as well. And there's another pergola at this end, which the St. Joe project did not have. You can see the benches that are incorporated along its length typically right there. And then we have a spot right here that becomes a critical spot from the art display standpoint, and we'll get to that here in a minute. And then you transition, again, I think it's easy to see the amount of circulation routes we're providing for the pedestrians and providing that experience and that repetition. And so if they're over here, they don't have to travel all the way over here, they can go where they want to go, which is comfortable for them. Anyway, you manage your way down to here, and then you have these nice, wide areas in front of the larger format stores. Again, we still are incorporating the landscape beds in here. We're still working with grades because buildings step as you move along. And we're also providing enhanced pavements and different scoring techniques and other things to really make it not look like it's just a sidewalk in front of a strip mall, because that's not what it is, and it's never been that. These drawings are consistent and have been consistent all along the way. And, you know, we're very proud of the fact that we've kept that consistency and that we think the quality is there and continues to be there. Some other notes here, some additional enhancement of paving. There is colored stamped concrete, and we'll go into a materials board here in just a second. And there are some stairs. I just want to show an example of storefronts and stairs and landscape, how they all work together. Ours actually have some wing walls on them with masonry and cast stone caps and stuff like that, so they're not open. Next slide. Courtyards. These are the two courtyards between J and K and L and M, which are these buildings and these buildings respectively. This courtyard is currently planned as a, you know, these two buildings step between them, so we have to make up grade. Grade is a great way to provide a seat wall, some stairs that really add to the character of the space, which is what we're trying to do here. Benches, seat wall, small fountain, again, a place that's comfortable, a place that's shaded with the tree cover, et cetera. But quality materials and a nice place to be when you're out at the project. And the same is similar with this one here. This one's a little bit different, focused on a trellis structure with an area underneath it and much heavier landscape. This is, I guess, more sort of an urban treatment to a courtyard, and this is a much more greener treatment from an aesthetic standpoint. These materials are the ones that you have been shown all along. These are materials that are being installed and constructed now as we speak. The, this area of the project, I think all of you are familiar, is being constructed now. The target has been approved and is being constructed, and so are these areas here. And these materials are what are going in those areas. The stamped concrete with the stain that almost, you know, has a sort of a leather color and richness and texture to it. The pavers, the site furnishings, excuse me, with the benches and the ash receptacles, and the, just the skill in which I think we're cutting and brewing stuff, and also the pedestrian lighting. So the elements that we showed you all along that we thought were quality elements to get the project approved are still the same elements that are in the project as we move along and construct. We think that's very important, and it's, RED does quality projects, and this is what this is about. Okay. So the part that the Arts Commission was obviously very focused on was the art-specific presentation that we made. And really, what we wanted to do is summarize for them how RED has approached art and what they believe art does for their own projects. Because every project that we've worked on with RED, there has been art. We've worked on 13 projects now, there's been art in every single project, whether it's heavily art-laden like a Legends project is, or whether it's a project that has maybe one or two key pieces in it. The idea is still the same, that art should be accessible and physically approachable, that you can get to it, it's not just seen from afar. It should be a reflection of the community that it's in, it should enhance the experience of the pedestrians, should be integrated into the development. It's not plop art here, there, everywhere. And that Blue Springs is unique, certainly in the fact that it has a very active and knowledgeable and successful Arts Commission. That's to be applauded and to be very proud of. Many, many communities, much, much larger than yours that we work in, do not have anybody nearly as savvy and understanding of art and what it means to the community. So we applaud you guys for that. Okay. Our plan, which is really the plan that we presented to the Arts Commission that has been re-summarized in their letter, is this. That RED will commission iconic sculptural piece for a prominent location in the development, that it will incorporate two artist-painted murals on buildings in the project, and that it will provide four additional locations for art throughout the pedestrian oriented spaces of the development. We will also allow the Arts Commission to utilize the I-70 ADP retaining wall right there off the ramp on I-70 for a public art piece that's commissioned by the Arts Commission. There are numerous things that need to be discussed about that, and the most important one to me is that art is, or that the wall is holding up buildings. And so whatever we do to the wall, we have to be very smart about what we do to that wall. So, but I think everybody recognizes that, but the offer is there as to how we would, to be able to utilize that wall if possible. And then we think it's critical and important for us to recognize the Arts Commission's efforts for the betterment of the city and the arts. So where does the commission piece goes? Well, I talked about this location earlier. We had several discussions internally with staff and with the Arts Commission about, well, where does the art really go and where is it important? To us, it's important for it to be internal to the development. We talked a lot earlier about where are the pedestrians going to go, where are we providing the spaces for them to go and the enhancements and all that other stuff. It makes no sense for a great piece to be out here somewhere. It needs to be here where people are going to see it. They're going to see it here, they're going to see it here, they're going to see it here. It's in a prominent location, it's internal to the circulation of the people, and you can get up next to it right here. So this is a piece that RED will commission. We certainly welcome any help that the Arts Commission would like to give us along the way in this process. They do much more of this than we do, even though we have it in a lot of, or all of the projects I've worked on, we've done it differently in every community. Some are really successful and some where they don't have people who know a lot about the artist, local artist community have been less so. So we would like to utilize them as a resource, they've extended their hand to do that, and we're very thankful, so. We have incorporated murals on buildings in the past. This is an example of, just one of the ones that was done at Legends here in town. We've also done it in the Sparks project, the Legends at Sparks Marina project that was recently opened. We think they're great, we think they're a nice touch, and we think they're a nice surprise. I think this mural came along after all the landscape was planned, and so eventually these trees are going to be cut down or moved or something because we don't want it blocking what's going on here. We have promised the Arts Commission that that will not happen in this project, and we will make sure that it is reflective. You can see where we were already planning for these pull-out areas here for benches and low landscape here because of the architecture, which we think is not, that's not reflective of the architecture, but architecture which we think is nice on the building, and that also provided a space, a gray space for the mural. So this area was already planned that way, and so we will continue with that. There'll be a little bit of rearrangement to make sure the mural is sized right, et cetera, and the scale is appropriate. These will be permanent installations, and we think that's a very nice addition. Additionally, the proposal was to include four additional locations throughout the development. And I think that has been met with much discussion, and I think recommendation and approval of the idea to become a part of the, or become the site for the Arts Commission's yearly rotation of exhibits either in 2011 or 2012. And then at that point, RED will move forward with getting permanent pieces for those locations. Those will be dedicated locations in the project that will be designed as a place-to-place art. There's, obviously, there's a lot of things go in that as the yearly rotation comes through. If there are, if there's one piece in there that we like, we'll get that, or we'll negotiate to get that from the artist and find three others. If there's four that we love and it's the ones that go there, then that may be what we do as well. I think everybody's in agreement that, obviously, with art and artists, you have to be flexible as to how you approach what are going to go there. What we do agree on is that it's four locations that are focused on the pedestrian areas and where they're going to go, but are also spread out through the development. Gives us a really nice sort of blanket effect of incorporating the art in the major pedestrian spaces in the project. I think you can also imagine that, especially as planning commissioners, how difficult it might be to be interacting with storefronts and et cetera, and national major tenants, and what are you putting in front of my store and some of those things. And we have that stuff to work out as well. But we think there are opportunities in between that we can certainly accomplish that stuff and easily accomplish that stuff there, so. And just as a note, this is a summary of the, what we think is in the letter and what we agree to with, I think, Jim's clarification that the wall at on Adams Dairy Parkway and I-70 is a, not only is it a critical engineering thing for us, but we think it's really, it's really a gateway. We know the fountains function as a gateway and all the landscape function as a gateway. But it's a gateway not just for us, but it's a gateway for everybody, especially all the retailers in the area, of which we're just, we may be three corners of that area, but there are significant other areas that would benefit from that as well. And so I'm not sure how that's all going to be squared away. I would say that we are interested in being involved for our fair share. But we think that there's probably some additional discussions that need to go on. And I think that's it. Anything else you'd like to add, Jim?
Okay. I don't have any other comments.
This is the chairman of the Public Art Commission. I'm sorry, I don't have your name.
Yes, I'm Eleanor Frazier, and I chair the Public Art Commission. And I want to thank the planning commission for the opportunity to speak, but also mostly I want to thank you for requiring the incorporation of public art in this project. I think it will provide the citizens of Blue Springs with a very attractive environment to shop, but I think it'll also give identity to the city. And I want to commend the Community Development Department for bringing RED to our Public Art Commission. We had a very lively discussion, we had some give and take. We, the result of that is that we're very pleased with the results, as you've heard. We think that the scope of the public art is being proposed is appropriate, and I'd like to identify some elements that we particularly liked. And one is that there will be a cooperative arrangement in selecting the artists and the artworks. It will be Blue Springs' voice in the kind of art that will be there. And we believe that the city and the citizens through the Public Art Commission will be pleased with it as a result of having this voice. The second thing is that the art will be very site-specific. We're looking at the art that fits that site, not just art that you could get somewhere, but art that fits that site, that kind of location, that area. And we also like the fact that there's a variety of artworks, the murals, the large piece, and the place for smaller artworks that allow a different kind of artist to present artworks rather than just a single piece. So for these reasons, the Public Art Commission is pleased to support the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there questions for Ms. Frazier?
No. Glad to.
I don't believe so. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Ben?
Yes, sir.
Are there questions for Mr. Ben?
Well, first, I'd like to say that I like the looks of all the hardscape. I know that sometimes it's not easy to do. I think you've all done a very good job. The question I have, however, is really concerning those pieces of property that are on the other side of the outer road, close to 70. The credits for the landscape art, are those being used in this particular Area 1?
Well, we have addressed this project as one project, one holistic project from day one. And because of the nature of these types of users here, we think that that money is much better spent in doing those things here where the volume-
much better spent in doing those things here where the volume of people who are going to stay and stroll and experience the development is much higher. We are meeting all the requirements for the landscape or the increased landscape on these areas. We are providing crosswalk access and sidewalk access, but again, we have focused our efforts intentionally on providing those amenities in the area in which people are going to stay focused on.
Which I have no problem with, I think that's great. I just wanted to make sure that those credits for Area Two and Area Three are being used and not going to go helter-skelter somewhere.
Okay.
Just like to point out, and as it's stated in the memorandum, in Areas Two and Three, the reduction that they requested was a lot less than it was in Area One. So in Area Two, they received a 7% buy-down, in Area Three, only a 6% buy-down. So really the buy-down that you had for those two areas was less. And yeah, we did consider that when we looked at the overall art program that they were doing.
Okay, that was really what I was wanting to know, that that was being used in that Area One.
Yes.
Great, thank you. I think it's very nice.
Thank you.
Bennett, how do you pay for, at the other locations, your other shopping centers where you have art, how has that been paid for?
I think Jeff could address that in detail, but it varies. A lot of times, it really is RED paying for that and because it's an enhancement to their project. In some cases, we have a roundabout that is the focus of the, you know, in the middle of the main street and it seems like a place where we put a piece there. I think, like I said, every community is different and the feedback that we received was that we want our art to be approachable, seeable, we want to touch it and get near it, which is one of the reasons why you don't find something in that big bullseye right there. And so we're trying to be reflective of the community on those things. So it varies by community as to how it's paid for. A lot of times, RED is just simply paying for it as a part of their requirement for the city to do the development in that city, but it varies all over.
Well, my question is, is there more art incorporated into this because of the buy-down or would it have happened anyway?
I think that there was certainly going to be some art incorporated into the project. The scale, you know, the PUD process is so involved and you're always thinking about how that works. We never really talked about, well, if we weren't doing that, it would be this, if we were doing that, it would be this. It's always been this project doing it this way. But we knew that the Arts Commission wanted to, you know, sort of spread the wealth throughout the project and so if you want to think in those terms, maybe the pink stars that were on there are certainly more than we would normally do on a project of this scale and size and type.
I would hope that there would be more art incorporated into this because of the buy-down. Are there other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does this require any action on our part? Okay, are there other items of business? Yes, Mr. Holly?
Well, as you'll note in the last paragraph of the memo, at this point, this is a design summary and it was required as condition number 18 and so I don't know that it requires a specific action other than letting them know if you agree with their proposal, if you would prefer that in some way they modify that proposal, or if you would just like them to go back to the drawing board. That's sort of the action that is taken here is to give them the direction that they need to know whether, as I say, if you agree with it, then they of course continue to pursue it and we go down this road. If you have any modifications or anything you'd like to add, you let them know what that is. And again, as I say, if you just flat out disagree with their approach, they need to know that now.
Are there any comments pertaining to what Mr. Holly has just said? Yes, Mr. Kenny.
I understand that the visitors in Area Two and Three may be different visitors, at least that's how you described it. And I would assume your classification of the variance in visitors in those two areas is because it's more of a drive-through type area. I would like to see some kind of arts in Two and Three to show that there's congruency amongst the whole project. It doesn't have to be nearly as large, but it seems like there should be something.
I agree with that. It seems like it would tie the whole project together a little more if you had art in all three areas. It doesn't have to be major, it couldn't be major, I don't think, in Areas Two and Three, but it seemed like there ought to be something that would tie that together.
Correctly if I'm wrong, but aren't the pavement and the pavers and that sort of thing, isn't that being continued on into those areas?
Yes. And in most cases, you know, in some cases, some of these are being sold off and there are other developers and those other developers are coming in to get their project approved and they have to get their project approved under all of the things that were approved for the overlay and et cetera. So all of those things are there. But again, the spaces in which to, you know, this is just a square, that's not what that building's going to look like. And so there's really, we don't know how much space is going to be there, what that configuration is going to look like, et cetera, et cetera. So we're trying to avoid the idea of plop art, that somebody goes to a catalog and they buy something and they come in and they stick it in and it costs them, you know, $300, $400 and it's there and it doesn't really fit and there's no reason to have it. And we don't think that enhances the pedestrian experience and it doesn't, in my opinion, reflect on your city well or especially on my client well. That something that's much more thought out and integral to the project that has spent a lot of time in discussion with the Arts Commission, et cetera, is really what we were looking for and that demands larger space instead of, you know, in a sidewalk in front of a restaurant that's, you know, it just didn't seem like it was the way that we wanted. It was not the way that we wanted to approach it or the way that we wanted to go. That's also why we agree, yeah, we agree that spreading some of it out is important. That's why we agreed to let a larger gateway piece happen on the wall at the highway.
I'm kind of concerned about that wall, what that might...
Roscoe and I have had even initial discussions, yeah, even initial discussions about how difficult it could be. And I think it's very easy to, it's very easy to solve as long as you can get into some of the bearing of the wall and, but engineering's easy. I mean, as long as we can all agree on things, that's really the hard part. We can engineer it right and we can make sure it stays up and it works, so we're confident of that.
Other questions or comments?
I have another comment. I kind of agree with the RED folks as far as people are going to be mingling and spending more time in this part of the area down here where they already have their artwork. I mean, yeah, you could pay a kind of token art in Area Two and Three, but people are going to appreciate it, they can drive by and see you out, same thing as the other art there, but I kind of agree that they're going to, people are going to spend more time in the areas they picked out and that's really where we should be paying our buck because that's where people are going to be hanging out and mingling. Because I hate to spend some money on some art in Two and Three where you're going to see it real quick when you drive by, get your food, and watch this mic.
Area Three, I don't know, Area Two, I don't go over that direction much, but Area Three is so congested as it is. When you put a piece of art there, people would be running over it.
That's true.
That thing we need to distinguish between art and decoration, I mean, we can decorate any area, but art is a little different, so let's leave art as art.
I think it's a great comment. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Phillips.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the design summary as proposed in satisfaction of the reduced landscaping that has been approved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a roll call on that.
Mr. Culpepper?
Aye.
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Trozen?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimously endorse. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, do we have other items of business to see? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Now, we have a training session that is voluntary, if you'd like to stay for that.